United States of America and the Republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. I would like to invite... Who am I inviting?
Mark Garrett.
Mark? I didn't want to invite you to the podium unless I knew for sure you were doing our invocation.
Because I may just keep on...
You could have just blessed our presence, so...
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Thanks you all for serving too as a member of this community. I just want to say thank you. At times I know it's challenging, and so thank you for serving. As I... Right before we pray, just Jerry wanted me to preach, and so something like that is what I heard. I can't remember. But this scripture came to my mind this evening, and I just want to share it with you. It says, it's really about what does God require of us? It says, He has shown you, oh mortal, what is good. And what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk calmly with your God. So let's pray. God, this evening, we pause to thank you for your goodness in our lives, but we thank you for the way that you work in us, and Lord, for allowing us to be a part of this community. Lord, with all of its flaws, it's still a great place to live, and we thank you for that. Lord, for the men and women that serve this community, we pray that you'll bless their lives, that you will give them wisdom, give them guidance, we pray. Lord, as they make decisions that aren't always favorable on everyone, God, that they would have the wisdom that is required of them for the decisions for us all. And God, as we are here this evening, we stop and we remember Ray Akra. We thank you for the service that he had to this community, Lord, for the passion that he had for the city. But we pray especially for Debbie, for their sons, God, that you will be with them and walk with them, we pray. Lord, as they go in this time of grief, that your presence will be with them. Lord, may we surround them with your love. So God, this evening, be with us, we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, Jerry Wilson said, "Don't take a sad bird by the Billy Grant's song."
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we will start with the roll call, please.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Here.
Mrs. Van Cleef?
Here.
And I would like to take a moment to thank Ms. Mary for filling in for Cheryl this evening. She's taking our minutes and keeping us in line, so let's take it easy. Jerry?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we excuse Tony. He's on vacation.
Okay, we have a motion, and Jean Second to excuse Councilman Egner.
Yes.
Jean Wilson Second.
Jean Wilson.
Roll call.
Mr. Abrams?
Yay.
Mr. Samuels?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleef?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay. Approved council meeting minutes for May 20th, 2025?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Patty and Abrams, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Van Cleef?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson? Sorry. Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we will move into presentations, and the American Legion has a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I think you need to go to the podium with Councilwoman Jean Wilson.
Thank you, sir.
And a resident photographer.
Yes. A photographer. Thank you. Thank you, Patty, for always doing that. As you know, Mr. Mayor Grubbs, Yager Benson Post 199 is one of your biggest supporters of the Mayor's Fund, and we give a donation every month to the Mayor's Fund because we want to make sure that the Mayor's Fund can serve the people in need that live in our city. And not only are we giving you this check, but last council meeting, we gave a check to Christ of Loving Hands for their loads of love to do laundry. While the auxiliary decided to do a fundraiser, and we took six baskets, laundry baskets, full of laundry detergent, bleach, fabric softener, grease removal, anything that you need for laundry, we took it to Christ of Loving Hands last week, and they were very appreciative. So in our tradition, we'd like to give you a check for $2,500 tonight.
Hold the check out. It's folded up.
That's all right. I'll get yelled at anyways. Thank you.
I would like to take a moment to thank the American... Team down at the American Legion. Obviously, summer months, everyone is extremely busy, but that doesn't decrease the demand for assistance. Actually, we've seen increased numbers with some of the changes that have taken place across the country in our community. We have. We've seen an increase in request for utility and rent assistance, so this will go far in helping many individuals in our community. So thank you. We will go ahead and move into invited guests and visitors, and our first guest, Ms. Emily, is not with us this evening. She messaged me and let me know that she would not be in attendance, so I will go ahead and move on to Ms. Debbie Davis. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Very good. Thank you.
I wanted to talk about the utility bills and the point and pay.
Yes.
And the due date on them, how they change sometimes. My husband died about two years ago. He used to take care of this. My daughter set it up. I called about, I guess it was about two or three months ago, because I have automatic pay.
Okay.
Okay, so when I called a couple of months ago, because it was added on like a double, and I got... I'm confused about it. But anyway, today, and we have a third party that bills.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
When you call out there, they say they don't do it. They're not in charge of it.
Okay, so officially, the credit card processing is the third party in this case, just to be clear, but I know where you're at.
Okay, well, anyway.
Yes.
When I called, they didn't tell me that my bill was late. I know it's right on there, but it's very confusing. So anyway, I guess for the last two years, I've been paying a late fee that I didn't know about. It's set up auto pay, but the bill due date changes if it falls on the weekend. I want to know how many people in Harrison have this auto pay that are getting this late charge that they don't even know about.
The number of individuals that are set up on auto pay, I can't answer that question. As for if they have it set up for payment on the due date, and the due date happens to fall on the weekend, then it should be processed on the next available business day, but there should not be a late fee that's assessed as long as the original payment was set up for the due date. I don't know the exact specifications of the situation that you were in. I don't, but I... It is my understanding that you had a conversation with the utility department, maybe the finance director, and they did reimburse you for some of the fees, obviously, two years.
No, no, no. She said no. The... I don't think any fee were... We didn't even discuss that.
Were there some fees reimbursed?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have to check on that part of it.
We got it straightened out, but my question is, how many people is this happening to when you change the due dates, which you said the due date changes if it falls on the weekend?
Correct. If it falls on the weekend, it'll move to the next available business day. Now, I have not, me personally, I have not heard any complaints in regards to being charged late fees or anything. I can say that we have received...
My daughter lost her... Okay.
We have received complaints in regards to the point and pay, and actually, we've talked about trying to change point and pay for probably three, four years, and we finally have an opportunity to convert it from point and pay to our existing operating finance system, and we are going to make that change, and it's been a long process, but we are getting that done. But I'd encourage you to... This is Kim Downey, our finance director.
Okay.
I'd encourage you to reach out to her. She'll follow up with our utility department and check on some of the late fees.
Because who would set up auto pay, trying to be responsible, set it for the wrong date to pay it late?
Correct.
Who would do that?
No, I understand.
And the same thing happened to my daughter. She lost a $200 deposit. Same thing.
That's a whole other inquiry.
Right.
If she would like to inquire in regard to that, then please have her reach out to us.
Well, she's working the night she couldn't be here. And then another issue I have is with, same thing sewage, getting ready to put the splash pad up.
Oh, okay. The splash pad out here?
Okay. Which, I live on Marie Court. This is an old issue. The streets have flooded several times. I know it's never been addressed. They put a new sidewalk in on Etta. We've been promised this, I don't know, this long before you came in, years ago. We were promised the new sidewalk. It's never happened. When we put all this water down the sewer, what's going to happen?
Well, the sewer capacity here at the... Here at the community center should be able to easily handle the water capacity that's generated from the splash pad. It should not adversely affect any of the neighborhoods anywhere, any which way it goes. It should not adversely affect it. In regard to the sidewalk over... And I'm sorry, you said Marie?
Marie Court, right.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I had the right street. Over on Marie. Normally, the sidewalks themselves are the responsibility of the resident that's in front of the house. The portion of the sidewalk that's in front of your house is the resident's responsibility.
No, no, I'm talking about the curbs, everything. They were supposed to... They did it on... They did it on Cater. We were supposed to be done our street when...
What street do you live on?
Marie.
I don't think Marie was in for a total reconstruction. I know there was some sewer repair because of the water backup, but from my understanding, that has been fixed for probably two, three years now, where it doesn't back up. So are you telling me that it's still backing up?
We just had it, when that last year even, it flooded all the way up to Cater. It's still an existing problem. Every time it rains.
And that's the storm water, every time it rains?
Yes. Just about.
Any add to your list of chaos?
I mean, it just had, when that last year, when it was, I mean, it hit all the way up to Cater, it did it.
Well, obviously, if it's raining five, six inches in a day, that's something that's extraordinary, but if it's causing problems during a normal rain event for our area, that's something that we need to make sure that, one, call us. Please call us, because we need to make sure that we try to find the problem.
It mostly happens at the bottom of the street. We live on the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And my house kind of sits down, but I mean, my neighbor next to me, which her house is flat, she has water, standing water coming in her house, and her house is flat. So it's happened several times.
I thought that was fixed, but...
We have a problem.
When was the last event that it happened?
It was last year, but it's still. I mean, it's a problem.
Okay. Well, we can still send a camera down the line to make sure there's new blockage and everything along Newsline, so...
It just, when I heard you guys were putting that in, it's just like, here we go.
Yeah. We will. We'll have the team go out there and check that out and just make sure that it should operate properly if there's an event that takes place.
Not a question.
Yes.
Because she's got a real problem. I haven't had... I haven't had my basement flood maybe in about seven years, but...
Okay.
But when it, like, my driveway goes like this, so when the street floods, it comes late.
Comes down over, waterfalls.
Waterfall, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I do. I appreciate you taking the time to stop in this evening and let us know. Please take time to reach out to Kim and follow up on the utility bill, and then Andy will check. You'll probably see some individuals with the city shirts.
Okay.
Out and about, probably checking the storm drains.
Okay. We appreciate it.
Because we do. We need to make sure those are operating properly.
Okay.
Do you have a question for her?
I just wanted to clarify the billing issue. You think this billing issue is just a result of the changing dates as it relates to a weekend?
That's what she said, and then she said, you know, she didn't have my information. It was just odd. It was just...
Okay.
Because I had called like three months ago, and if my... If I had the wrong date, I wish she would have told me then, because that's what I said while I called. And then she said, "Well, you didn't talk to me." It was just a really strange.
Okay.
Because why would I set up auto pay if I was going to pay it on the wrong date?
Oh, I agree.
Yes.
I just want to... I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're saying.
Because I'm trying to be responsible.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the business session. The first item is to vote on a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Harrison, Ohio, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund program and to execute contracts as required. Wilson, J.W. moves to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is this related to a particular project?
I'm checking which one. Because I think this is for Dair. We... Or Dry Fork. I'm sorry. It's for Dry Fork.
Okay.
That's what was in my mind, but I said Dair.
Well, we've been talking Dair all night.
I know.
[laughing]
Dry Fork.
No, I'm good.
Okay, you have the first one. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Van Cleef?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Abrams?
Yay.
Mr. Samuels?
Yay.
Okay. The next item is to vote on ordinance amending the amounts appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison, Ohio.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, real quick, just to get these out here. A lot of these amendments that are coming through, we have about $4,000 that is being appropriated through a donation from the Moose Lodge. We have about $25,000 set aside for the parking lot bollards, which will provide better security for downtown events. $21,000 for the remaining ARPA funds that are sitting there. That's just being appropriated. $27,000 for reimbursement related to the water storage tank and purchase of the land where the tank sits. And also, we have appropriation for a treadmill that's to be paid from the Fire Memorial Fund. So that's what that fund is set up for. So those are the items related on the appropriations.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Van Cleef?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Abrams?
Yay.
Mr. Samuels?
Yay.
Very good. That was the last item in our business session, so we'll go ahead and move into reports. Just have a couple of items. First, the city is in a search for an economic development director. Matt Eisenbrow has moved on, and that has opened that position. So if you have any interest in the economic development position, please submit your resume in a cover letter. You can send it directly to me or Ally Rogers here at the city of Harrison. She is our HR coordinator, and we'd be happy to review that and potentially sit down and have a conversation with you. In the meantime, I have been filling that position, just as I was a public works director. Now I get to be the economic development director. So if anybody has any inquiries into any projects in the city of Harrison, feel free to reach out to me, or you can call Joette in our economic development department, and she'll work with me and get an appointment set up to have a discussion. I did have an opportunity to attend our district meeting. The district has their own board that helps coordinate different events down in our district area of town, and Chief Lindsay and myself had the opportunity to attend the last meeting. The Spring Food Truck Rally was an absolute success. They did a magnificent job. It was estimated that there were 12,000 individuals that attended the event, which is by far our most well-tended... Most well-tended attended event. But with that comes, obviously, security concerns. You heard conversation about an appropriation for bollards. We need to make sure that we cut off access to any vehicle traffic, and we do have a couple of points of exposure that we're going to address. With this, we'll have big steel posts that will block any vehicle from coming through, so please don't hit them, because it'll damage your car. But the board down there continues to do an excellent job. They have their Fall Taste of Harrison coming up. There's ladies on the avenue. They have their once-a-month farmers markets and their second Saturdays. So their next second Saturday is June 14th, and their next farmer's market is June 29th. But I encourage you to take time to stop down and visit. While it's absolutely fabulous having 12,000 people for one event, it'd be even better if we had 12,000 people down there all the time. So please take time. Actually, that might be...
That's a little...
A little bit of a concern for my police and fire chief, so...
[laughing]
But I do. I encourage you to take time to stop down and visit with them and enjoy the district. I believe that's the last item that I had. Mr. Law Director?
I have that one.
Very good. Mr. Wilson?
Short one, Mayor. We had a street stormwater and utility meeting tonight. The water department, we have a... We had an Ohio EPA conduct a sanitary survey, and we passed with flying colors. We had the wastewater plant landfill remediation completed on May the 28th. We have a new wastewater coordinator, Tim Norman, who started May the 19th. Our road projects, I drove down Dair Avenue today just to see if there was any action. The only action there is two large pieces of equipment sitting there, and I found out this evening that they're going to start that construction on June the 16th, for sure. Circle Drive, a pre-construction meeting was held on June the 9th, and this will include Evans Court, Suncrest Court, and they're going to try to include the paving on Meadow Green Drive. Burke Lane, Mackey Lane, and Weathervein Lane, the project was awarded to J.R. Jerkensen, and we understand that's supposed to start on October the 17th or thereabouts. Edgewood Road, the shoring was needed for 285 feet. The job was completed on June 2nd, and it's my understanding that the Edgewood Road will be completely open somewhere around maybe or June the 19th. Am I close?
The 20th.
20th, that's close.
[laughing]
So that should make a whole lot of people on Facebook happy. That's all. Oh, the other thing is, we are interviewing this Saturday to fill the position that when we lost Ray Akra. We're going to be interviewing the people who ran for the office or ran in the primary, and that'll be this Saturday, starting at 9:30 or 10 o'clock it starts, and we will give that name to the city council, mayor and city council to be sworn in at our next meeting. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you for the update. Mr. Abrams?
I have nothing. Nothing tonight. I owe all my time to Mr. Samuels, because his will be long.
Very good. Mr. Samuel, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Doug, for your time.
Yes, sir.
Finance committee did meet on May 27th. As always, we did a review of our revenues and expenses. It's a consistent message, but the revenues and expenditures report, you know, we did review them. The revenues and expenses seem to be in line with the overall budget through April. You know, there are some ups, there are some downs, but overall, we're pretty happy with everything where everything is at. We did receive our biannual payment from the county for property taxes. Also, another noteworthy item is, we're just monitoring the water fund. I know that we passed legislation to increase the water rates, but also we passed a reduction in the sewer rates, so hopefully, there's really minimal impact to the water bills for everyone, but it is something we're watching on a monthly basis to make sure we are where we need to be. I talked about the budget amendments. Obviously, that came through Finance Committee, and it was approved at Finance Committee and approved tonight. I'm not going to repeat what I said before. A couple miscellaneous items that the finance group is dealing with. Health insurance renewal. The city is moving forward with an insurance renewal with Anthem. Unfortunately, we're seeing about a 24% increase for the upcoming plan year. They are looking at offering additional options to offset the premium increase for the employees. Open enrollment will hopefully begin in early June. The financial statements have been filed, and the state audit has begun, so I do believe that this is happening earlier and earlier in the year, so kudos to Kim and her team for getting this done. We did have a discussion around utilizing a fleet management service for the majority of passenger-type vehicles, the police crews, SUVs and trucks. The committee did ask more information on the topic before moving forward with a decision, so hopefully, the vendor will be in attendance at the next meeting or will have some more information for a discussion. Kim is also working on the city's property and liability insurance renewal with Highland. Also, Kim provided information for part-time seasonal employee pay rates in preparation for the annual increase discussion. The committee did have a discussion about the purchase of property for a future fire station. This obviously will be an ongoing discussion. The plans for the future safety services are finalized. Kim also provided a legislative update on several bills that are working through state of Ohio's legislature. One big one, House Bill 280, which is an increase in the employer contributions to the OPNF fund or the pension fund for police and fire. And also, there was a discussion regarding the property tax proposal that has been moving through. It's not actually legislation yet, but I think they're in the process of getting signatures and talked about the impact of that. So other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Very good. Ms. Patty?
Yes, Mayor. Tonight, we had a tech and media meeting, and I wanted to welcome Amy, our new intern. She will be working on communications and social media for the city, which everyone will be happy about. We also met for economic development. We had applications for permits recently for a new women's children's consignment store coming to the 200 block of Harrison Avenue and a new Indian restaurant on North State Street. We also talked about our gateway grant, which is the electronic signage for entrance to downtown, and we're currently taking bids from companies to select who is going to put those in for us. We had an original facade grant for $50,000 that Huesmann's, Market Street Grill, and H&R Block are taking advantage of. I'm sure everyone has seen Market Street Grill. They had a beautiful paint job done. It looks amazing, and that, those are things we like to see in our city, and that's why we always apply for the facade grants. We did actually receive an additional facade grant for $130,000, which is available now to downtown businesses. If anyone is interested in making their building look like Market Street Grill, we would love that. We also talked about our comprehensive plan tonight. As I've said before, American Structure Point is handling the comprehensive plan for us for the next 18 months, and they spent time at the food truck rally, talking to citizens and residents of our beautiful city, and they are now analyzing the data collected at that food truck rally, and it will be summarized and shared with the public in the next one to two months. And the survey is still up and available. If anyone has time to take our survey about our city, it's at HarrisonCompPlan.com. And Mayor, that is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that our concert series is starting next Tuesday, and we're kicking it off with Strange Love on June the 24th. It's the Austin Tyler Lee Band. July the 15th will be The Remains, and on July the 22nd, we'll be having the Journey Tribute. So we've got a great concert lineup. We hope you guys will come out and support it. They'll have food there, cold beverages. I'll split the pot, and you come out and see all your friends, socialize, and have a good time and listen to some great music. We're still doing plans, planning for July the 4th, so we'll probably have more information on that at our next council meeting. Don't forget that this is the first Tuesday of the month, so it's be the one. Please check on those people that may be a shut-in or going through a difficult time. It's always good to hear that someone cares about you, just with a phone call or... It's always good to hear that someone cares about you just with a phone call or a stop-by. Uh, remember, every tw- twenty-two minutes in our country, a veteran takes their life by suicide, and that's one too many. Um, also, on the, uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Ryan Samuels for, uh, coming to our Memorial Day service and bringing greetings, um, to, for the city. He did an excellent job, and I want to thank Mayor Grubbs for doing a great, great job on his, um, speech to all of us. It was very moving, and, uh, if you listened to it, um, it had a lot of meaning to it. So, we appreciate you being there, and also appreciate you walking, although we tried to get the other Ryan to. Want to appreciate you walking with the commander and myself in the parade. Uh, it was quite a stretch for me, but I made it up that hill.
That last hill was always up.
And I'm very happy to say that the Hamilton County Veteran Service Commission, um, has done a complete overhaul of our office and the services that we're being able to offer in the past year. We now have, uh, transportation available, um, to veterans that need to be transported to the VA. Um, you can get on their website and see all the exciting things that we have going on. Um, also, you can get on the website and, uh, getting communications with the Transportation Department, so if you need a, a ride to, uh, the VA, um, you can line that up with them. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Um, Mayor, I have two things, um, to add. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank Chief Hersong for a ride up the hill to the ceremony. Uh, second, uh, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we retire to executive session. Uh, we have three topics, uh, Ohio Revised Code one-two-one dot two-two, Section G one. Personnel issue to consider promotion of a public employee. Ohio Revised Code or O R C one-two-one dot two-two, uh, G two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. And the last one will be, uh, O R C one-two-one dot two-two, uh, Section G three, to conference with an attorney regarding court action involving public or public body.
That's a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Abrams?
Yay.
Mr. Samuels?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Okay, with that, we'll retire to executive session. Thank you.